We'll call this regular meeting of Jacksonville City Council order. Want to welcome everyone who's come out for the meeting this evening and also those who'll be watching on the G-10 television. To begin the meeting, we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mr. Jackson and followed by the invitation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Our most gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for today. We thank you for all your glory. We thank you for allowing us to be here. We thank you for the many blessings that you provide to us each and every day, Lord. We're grateful for the opportunity to gather together for the mayor and the council to carry out the business of the community, to represent 72,000 people that call Jacksonville home, Lord, and for all those that come to our community each and every day. Lord, our goal is to glorify you through our actions in the community. Lord, we ask for wisdom in the discussions tonight. We ask for understanding. We ask for grace and for mercy. Lord, thank you for the ability to be here and for all of your love each and every day. In your name we pray. Amen.
Our council, we have a copy of the agenda for tonight's meeting and we're going to change a little something over here. We're going to move the reports up to the number nine and a half, I guess is the way to describe it, nine eight. Do nine eight and also following that will do the one city. With that, entertain a motion to adopt the agenda. So, those.
Second.
Any further discussion? Here none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Next, we go to our first section of public comment for this evening, and I have one person signed up, Mr. Timothy Solomon, 100 Keller Court. If you would please take the podium there and.
Does that mean I get the full 15 minutes?
You state your name and address to the clerk.
Timothy Solomon, 100 Keller Court, Jacksonville, Bayshore Estates. Does that mean I get the full 15 minutes here to talk?
No.
If I go over, can I? It may. First of all, I want to start out, this is all the Bible, the book of Ecclesiastes, Chapter seven, verse 19 of St. St. Wisdom makes one wise person more powerful than ten rulers in a city. Remember that. And also in the same book at Chapter nine, verse one, it also states, wisdom has built her house. She has set up its seven pillars, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. That's you. You're the seven pillars for the city. You're the leaders. You are those seven pillars. My prayer is that you will seek his wisdom in everything you do because wisdom has to be asked for. So I ask that you ask every day for his wisdom to guide you in leading this city in the proper way. Okay, I'm not here to preach. I do not remember how long ago I addressed the council on this issue that I am here about again, but it has been well over a year. In a lengthy and detailed email to Brian Kelly on 4/19/24, I sent him an email. In his reply, he said, "The fire chief would be contacting me to discuss the issue at hand. I've been waiting on that call for over a year." Hasn't called me. The burning of debris and other wood and charcoals is an issue that has burned in my family for years. As a resident of Bayshore Estates for over 32 years, this is among other municipal codes, issues that not only affect our health, they also affect the landscape of our city. But tonight, my concern is again, the burning of debris other than wood in this city. People are not gathering around a fire pit to get warmed by some dried out oak, pine, or hickory, and there's no need to get warmed by a fire right now in the city. It's pretty warm up. It's about residents not respecting their neighbors, and there's a lot of that going on. The municipal code on burning in the city limits is very ambiguous at best. It's odd. You have one thing saying one thing and another side saying the other. The maintaining, and here's one of them, the maintaining, using, placing, depositing, leaving, permitting, or the remaining of any of the following items on any public or private property, conditions or actions are hereby declared to be a constituent of a nuisance, provided however, the enumeration shall not be deemed or construed to be conclusive, limited, or restrictive. Okay. Outdoor fire permit, and that's in Section 879 of the municipal code, a permit is required. It states there are exceptions, the following exceptions are hereby allowed, and of course, this is in conflict with something else stated by the fire department. Fires kindled for the instruction of firefighting, training, small fires kindled in or upon the ground, which I don't understand, with provisions made to prevent the spread of a fire, or in a barbecue pit, and so on. I could go on, but I'm just going to skip all that. My question is, what is allowed to be burned in the city in these fire pits, these things that are so-called being allowed? But again, there's conflicting sides to this. The Jacksonville Gov. states they're not really allowed at all, but then municipal code says they are. Something has to be verified, and I, as many other people in the city, I have respiratory issues and it gets worse with each passing year. I just recovered from double pneumonia. So going outside when all this unnecessary burn is going on is just, it's rough. The city is big, very big on the New River in keeping it clean, but what about the air we breathe? I don't swim in the river. I don't drink from that river. I don't fish in it. I do not boat, and I do not use it for any recreational purposes at all. I just have no need for the New River, really. But I do need to go out and I need to breathe the air that when I go out.
Let me stop you there. I'd be kind of run out of time, but Mr. Ray, if you would look into his issue there, the issues he's talking about and see where we're at as far as the ordinance and, you know, what may need to be changed or what needs to be forced and discuss it with your fire.
If I can get a phone number before you leave, I'll make sure you get a call.
So that was three minutes already? Can you extend me for a couple?
I gave you two extra seconds. Be honest with you.
You did? Okay. Well, there's one thing. On the city calendar.
I didn't say I was giving you any free.
The city calendar says nothing about this, but everything else, clean and green. So we're not doing anything to combat this at all. So thank you for your time.
Yes, sir. Thank you for coming. All right. Let's see. Next, we have the adoption of amendments and the consent items. There's six of them down there, and the minutes are from the April 8, 2025 workshop meeting.
Move adoption of the minutes and consent items.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Here none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay, so we're going to go down to the public hearing here. Read down here. This is for special, special use permit and site plan. This is for a gum branch storage at 4231 Gum Branch Road. It's, they've submitted a site plan, a special use permit and site plan request to add a proposed 71,313 square foot self-service storage facility. Jeremy will be presenting this item. Jeremy, this is a quasi-judicial hearing, so let me recess the regular council meeting and open up the hearing on this matter. Do you swear the evidence you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help God?
I do.
Thank you. Go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item seven is a special use permit and type three site plan requested by VG Gum Branch Storage LLC. This project is proposed at 4231 Gum Branch Road. Notice the zoning map before you on the screen. Again, this is on Gum Branch Road at the corner of Rain Tree Road. The neighborhood itself of Rain Tree is in the Ozale County's jurisdiction, as is the neighborhood across, directly across Gum Branch Road. However, properties to the north are zoned corridor, commercial conditional, and currently used for a single-family home. Property across Rain Tree Road is zoned corridor commercial and was home to a Dollar General. The request is for a proposed self-storage facility, approximately 71,000 square feet and on 5.14 acres. The Camelanias Plan identifies this property and all adjacent properties in the city's jurisdiction on either side of Rain Tree Road, and north of this property is neighborhood commercial, and the residential properties that are in our jurisdiction across Gum Branch as low-density residential. Before you on the screen is the proposed site plan. It has been through the technical review committee and is found to meet the standards set by the city in addition to the special standards or use-specific standards for self-storage facilities. It was heard by the planning board at their March 10, 2025 meeting, and they along with staff are recommending approval of this request. It will not have a driveway on Gum Branch Road. They are proposing to have a Rain Tree Road driveway that will be permitted by NC DOT. This site is in the ETJ, will not be serviced by city utilities, will not have sewers. There's not a need for sewer, but it will have access to unlimited water. This is the arrow of photography to show you that the property is currently undeveloped. Again, the single-family in Rain Tree subdivision to the south and southeast, undeveloped and single-family to the north, residential across Gum Branch Road, and the Dollar General across Rain Tree Road. Before you, the elevations of what this would look like meeting our standards. One of the special or specific use standards for self-storage facilities is that bay doors not be visible from the street. And so the way this site is designed, the bay doors will all face inward, and the backs of the building will be clad in materials required by the city ordinance, and also encompass glazing windows. So they will look like traditional buildings on the outside to the rear. Before you on the screen is the landscaping plan. This site will be surrounded by landscaping standards of the city of Jacksonville's Unified Development Ordinance. Street lawns along Rain Tree Road and Gum Branch, perimeter lawn along the interior, and then the plantings around the proposed stormwater facility. With all that said, again, I will say that the planning board and staff are recommending approval, with finds of fact A through G being found in the affirmative, and that that project offers a valuable service to the community. Staff and representatives of the developer are in attendance to answer any questions that the council may have.
Any questions, Chairman, Council? Do you have someone representing, any representatives of the applicant here?
There is one of the engineers and I believe an attorney.
Do they wish to speak?
I do not know.
Need to swear again since this is an evidentiary hearing. You swear the evidence you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help God?
I do.
State your name and address to the clerk, please.
Logan Burnett. My address is 318 Glasgow Road in Cary, North Carolina. I represent the developer, Volta Global, and I'm the Vice President of Developments with Volta Global. First, I appreciate everyone's time this evening to hear our project, and I just wanted to be here to make myself available to answer any questions that you may have about it. Kyle Fountain is our counsel. He's also in attendance as well. Mr. Smith did a great job of explaining the details of the project, and I'm sure that you've received information, your preparation packets for this meeting that detail it. But in our view and in the staff's view, which we agree with, we have done everything that we can and need to do to meet the UDO regulations. Also, the regulations is prescribed by the special use permit. This project, we will build ourselves. We'll also manage it after the fact, so we have operational insight if you'd like to ask any questions about that. But like I said, here to make myself available. I don't want to take up too much time other than any direct questions that you may have for me.
Any questions?
I do. With this particular unit, is there 24-hour accessibility or there restricted hours?
Yes, there's restricted hours. So the facility is open from 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. We restrict those hours early in the morning or late at night. Usually, there's nothing productive happening during those hours, so we restrict access to the property. And there's a manager that would be on the site, which this particular property may, you know, have some elements of remote management. There's someone that will be actively dedicated to managing the site. Their hours are typically between 8:30 a.m. and 5:30 p.m.
Can I have another question?
Yes, please.
Considering that Rain Tree Road is going into a subdivision and Mr. Smith, you said this was zoned as low-density?
The property is zoned corridor commercial.
Corridor commercial. Okay. But the housing development is low-density, correct?
It is in the county's jurisdiction. I do not know what the zoning is. It is residential, I would assume, and be low-density, just to be similar to our zoning. When this, when this, similar subdivisions are low-density residential.
Okay. So this is my question, sir. Is there currently, since this is a DOT road, will there be a specific axle weight for this particular road so that, for example, if someone is trying to bring in, you know, an RV, someone is trying to bring in tractor trailers, someone's trying to store motor vehicles, things of that nature, is there an axle weight on this road? Because it sounds like this road is going into a residential area, so if more weight is being put on that road because the site may allow for various different vehicles to travel, will there be an axle weight specificity for this road along with this particular development?
It's a technical question. I'll give my best attempt at answering it. I'm not the civil engineer. My colleague, we have civil engineering in-house. He was representing us at the planning, yes, the planning board meeting. He's, he couldn't make it this evening. What I can say about the design, we have the ability to dictate the design of what happens on our parcel. So the driveway that gives people access into it, and then the circulation once they're on it. It's designed to, I would say, moderate specification weight to handle vehicles. What you'll typically see for a self-storage development would be personal vehicles, so passenger vehicles, cars, SUVs. You'll see small trucks, medium-sized trucks, probably of the personal capacity, or say someone has a work truck for a plumbing company or HVAC company. That's another common thing you'd see. Beyond that, you'll probably see Penske trucks or U-Haul trucks, things like that. We designed the site to be able to accommodate those. We also have to accommodate the fire apparatus that must traverse it as well. So I would say that if it's built to design, it's built and designed to accommodate fire apparatus, which are pretty heavy, that it would be able to handle on our site, which we control, those things. I don't think there's going to be a lot of tractor trailers. There's not going to be a lot of excessively large vehicles on the site because it's a bunch of turns. It's really designed for private use, and that's what 90% of our customers are, are private users. I hope that answered some of your question, but I can't speak to what the specifications that design for the roadway are outside and off our property.
Thank you.
So are you going to have stores for vehicles and stuff? Because I'm just looking at this plan. I didn't see that, right?
No, sir. This is all.
Just storage, yes.
Containerized, inside of a building storage. There'll be nothing that is outside these units, no parking or anything like that.
So no one can put actually a car in a unit?
No, that's against our lease rules. So, no, they would not be able to store a vehicle inside the unit.
Jeremy, since you're familiar with the site plan here, all right, help me out here in understanding, where are the points of ingress egress here? Are they just off of Gum Branch Road or are they?
There is no proposed driveway on Gum Branch, just turning into Rain Tree. And then you would have your primary, your own and only driveway.
Okay.
And they are not proposing to have any onsite storage of RVs or trucks.
And that is off of?
Rain Tree Road.
Rain Tree Road. Was there a required TIA done on this?
No, it does not. It is nowhere close to daily trips to require a TIA. They will have to get a DOT driveway permit, which will stipulate any improvements on their driveway and incoming.
Just out of curiosity, on that roadway there, aren't there garbage trucks, dump trucks, moving vans?
Yes.
And those sort of vehicles?
I would make that assumption that there are garbage trucks servicing the homes in Rain Tree subdivision.
Okay. So those are heavy axle vehicles, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Just want to make that clear in my head there.
I had a, has there been any opposition from the residents?
There have been calls when we posted the property for sign, and I believe some residents are here with questions or just wanting to see what's being proposed. Generally, the question when folks call is, you know, traffic, you know, is this going to generate traffic? And we do have a slide that will hopefully give the board some ideas of what this type of project would generate. On this slide before you, a proposed self-storage at approximately 69,000 to 70,000 as it is would have a total AM and PM trips of 16. The Dollar General itself has a total of 87 AM and PM trips daily. Pharmacy or a drugstore with a drive-through or fast-food restaurant with a drive-through, which are permitted by right in the corridor commercial zoning district, would not require city council approval, have your highest amount of traffic. A drugstore at the size of a Walgreens or a CVS, which could easily fit on this property, would have just under 200 trips daily, whereas, of course, a fast-food restaurant would exceed 250 daily. We just wanted to put those out there because generally, anytime you have development on or near a residence, traffic's always your concern.
Now, Rain Tree, is there any of that still under construction or is that?
There may be an infill lot of one or two, and then further down Somersil Road, I know there's some empty lots there, you know, they'll fill in.
I thought there's some.
But I think the biggest thing that impacts Rain Tree Road is they're, they're on a private utility system, and it kind of constrains any kind of new development.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. All right. So this is a public hearing, and I'm going to read something up once you pay particular attention to. This is a, this is a quasi-judicial hearing, okay? What that means basically is, it means the council is required to make a decision based solely on the law and ordinances as written, factual evidence, and testimony presented during this hearing. As in court, all speakers must testify under oath. All testimony given to the council must be factual and relevant to the criteria established in the municipal code and applicable law. Opinions not supported by factual evidence or personal knowledge may not be considered by the council in this decision. Testimony on the impact to neighboring property values may only be considered if provided with analysis from a qualified real estate appraiser. Once a decision is made, if the property owner disagrees with the decision, they have the right to file an appeal in the Superior Court of North Carolina. Staff will present the case, and we will hear testimony, which they have already presented the case, and we will hear testimony from the applicants, which we have. All speakers will be given a three-minute time limit, and your testimony should add new information to the facts on record, and please refrain from solely repeating facts already in evidence prior, from prior testimony. So before you testify, please state your name and address for the record. So at this time, I'm going to ask anyone who's present that wishes to speak to this issue, please indicate by raising your hand. Sir, would you please approach the podium up here on my right, your left? And if you would give your name and address to the clerk. First off, let me swear again, please. Do you swear that the information you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help God?
I do.
Thank you. Please state your name and address to the clerk.
My name is Andrew Unsworth, 125 Saddle Ridge Court. Couple of questions for the planning folks. Regarding notice for this meeting, I don't think the residents had enough. The Daily News had two notices that I could see. The sign along the road was very hard to see. It took me four transverses of Gum Branch Road to figure out what the sign said and the number to call. Now, is there a stormwater management plan required for this project? And I think I saw a retention pond.
Yes.
Okay, so that takes care of that.
Stormwater.
Deal. Rain Tree Road floods really bad at times. Current owner of the property, does the limited liability folks own the property? Are they going to buy it contingent on approval?
I cannot speak to that.
We might have to get that answer, get that answer and give it to you at a later time.
Okay. Next question, the LLC is based in Delaware. If somebody's coming home to do business here, I would expect that they would have a North Carolina LLC and not take advantage of the no taxes to this entity. Last question, what recourse do the Rain Tree residents have if we don't like the system or the decision? I submit that we ought to have another hearing after we make effort to get more publicity on this thing to the people impacted.
As I mentioned before, I think the notice was in compliance with applicable law and ordinance, but like I said before, you do have the ability to file an appeal with the Superior Court here in Ozale County.
Okay, there, is that by an entity that exists or just a couple people that think, oh, I wish I knew about it, I would have showed up?
Anyone that's impacted by this decision tonight, which if you're a resident of Rain Tree, I believe that would impact you.
Yes, sir. To summarize, my, really two considerations, stormwater is taken care of, traffic congestion on the road. When it rains and floods, it's going to be a mess out there. And end of my three minutes, I can give somebody a copy of my notes if they want.
You can give it to the clerk.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Unsworth. Next, yes, sir. Please be sworn. Do you swear that the evidence you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help God?
I do.
Would you please state your name and address to the clerk?
Yes, ma'am. Calvin Lindsey, 225 Woodcrest Court, Jacksonville, in the Rain Tree subdivision.
Thank you.
I suppose I'll begin just by telling the story. My wife and I moved in the Rain Tree in the summer of 87. It was a new development. It was somewhat in the country at that time, as evidenced by the foxes, the deers, and everything else that pranced around out there in front of Rain Tree. But it was a great neighborhood to raise, to raise a family. And we were promised by Omni Homes at that time that there would be playground facilities there at the front of Rain Tree. Omni pulled out after a number of years. Of course, those playgrounds never materialized, but we did appreciate having the trees in the open field. The neighborhood pop winter football league practices out there in the fall. You see families out there walking their dogs, playing frisbee, et cetera. And taken by surprise, not too many years ago, the Dollar General pops up in front of Rain Tree subdivision, and along with it, a retention pond, et cetera. And like Mr. Unsworth said, the signage there advertising this public hearing was very minimal. So we were taken by surprise, but I decided to come here and receive him to speak out against this proposal. I looked at the plans for this storage facility, and it butts right up against my neighbor's property line. And to have something that large, which I would deem an eyesore, if you've driven over somewhere around Commerce and Center Street lately, look at some of the storage facilities that exist there, that have been there for a number of years, they're a doggone eyesore. They're neglected. And I do not want that thing in front of my subdevelop, or subdivision. It would affect my property values, I have no doubt. Again, if they want to construct something, and I'm all for it, find another place to put it. Put it over on Center Street where those other ones that are falling apart, put something up new for storage facility. And when I look around the maps, there's an Aloha Storage about a mile up the road on Gum Branch. Moving down towards Gum Branch and Western, there by the Eggs Up Restaurant, there's a storage facility. Across into Speedway and a. Across into Speedway and adjacent to the Advanced Auto and Autozone, there's a brand-new storage facility, multi-story facility, climate-controlled. So, I mean, it seems like it's being overbuilt, and I would question, how much revenue does it actually bring to the city coffers? I'll wrap it up with this. I'm short on time, but we live in the ETJ, and the residents of Rain Tree are caught in a particular situation because we have no representation on this council. So you all can make decisions that affect us, but really, we don't vote for anybody. Who do we go to to speak our mind other than here at a public hearing? So, anyway, but thank you for your time, I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Lindsey. Sir? Please be sworn, please.
My...
I need for you to swear to this. You swear the information you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you God?
Yes, sir.
Please give your name and address to the clerk.
My name is John Stube, 140 Rain Tree Circle, Jacksonville, North Carolina. And as the gentleman said, this is poorly advertised. I saw the one sign a couple of days ago, so I have no prepared notes. I will tell you that, and you spoke of not giving opinions, and I'll try not to, but that's hard to do. Generally, I think most of us would consider that storage facilities are not good-looking facilities, and it is at the entrance of my housing development. And again, as the gentleman previously spoke, we did not vote for any of you. I'm pretty sure that the folks that live in North Woods or Brenmar would be pretty unhappy if the county commissioners were allowed to authorize a storage facility in front of their neighborhoods, even though they had the opportunity to vote for the county commissioners. I had no opportunity to vote for any of you. So you're making a decision that affects my property value, my public safety, and I have no representation here. Quite frankly, that's un-American. But I will say that my concern is with the safety of Rain Tree Road. And I didn't have the time to jot down the numbers, but I think most people have lived there for a while, know that that's a very dangerous intersection. We had a motorcyclist killed there just a couple of years ago when a car turned in front of him, and he teed bow in that car and went headlong into the curb. In the last couple of years, I've noted personally seen several serious accidents that had the road blocked at that intersection with serious injuries and ambulances. That road is poorly maintained by DOT. It was paved about four or five years ago. I believe that was the first time that that road has been paved since that development was opened. That's unlike the folks that live in Jacksonville. I did live in Jacksonville a while. We get our roads paved every few years. That doesn't happen in Brenmar. Those roads are already beat up. I would submit to you that those roads with traffic from outside our community going in and out, most of the people that live in Rain Tree have garages. Most people have a place to store their stuff. So I can only surmise that the people that would be storing stuff in those storage facilities live in apartments in other areas where they don't have the ability to store stuff. So that'll be bringing additional traffic on our roads, which are already getting warrant worn already. But my main concern is with the safety of that road. It's very narrow. There's Milk Road Coffee across the street. Traffic is trying to turn both directions on the Gum Branch. We have the Dollar General with an entrance of Dollar General in the turn lane ahead of where the entrance is to Rain Tree, which gets very confusing. And we have a significant uphill slope on the end of that Rain Tree Road as it enters into Gum Branch, which obstructs visibility and makes it difficult to judge your acceleration rate as you're turning either right or left in front of traffic. And I just think that anything like a storage facility is going to bring in additional traffic, in particularly since they said that the entrances are going to be actually on Rain Tree Road and not on Gum Branch. It's going to further cause disruptions to our traffic and safety concerns for us that live in Rain Tree and have to use Rain Tree Road to get in and out. In fact, I will tell you that I frequently go down to the school, what is it, Silverdale?
Somersil.
Somersil Road to use the traffic light because I've found it much safer. And then the problem you have there, if you're there when the school buses or the kids are getting out, there's a half-mile line down that road, and it's very difficult to get out that way, too. And we get landlocked. We get landlocked as it is right now in Rain Tree because of that. And it gets very dangerous, and the floods don't help any, and I just hope that those things would be addressed. And I'll tell you, if you're going to put a facility there, then a stoplight needs to go there so we can control the traffic. That's all I had to say. Thank you.
Quick question, Jeremy. There was no attempt to try to make cuts off the Gum Branch versus that road? Who wants that road?
Rain Tree Road is a state DOT road.
It's a state DOT road?
Yes.
So there was no way to bring them in off?
No, early discussions with DOT was they encouraged not another driveway on to Gum Branch Road.
My question, Jeremy, is could they just flip the entrance instead of at the front of the property towards the back of the property? I mean, would that really hinder any extra?
They are closing an existing driveway cut there on the plan. I mean, that would be up to them, but they would need to table it and go back through TRC to review that. But that is up to the applicant and their desires, but it would put the driveway further away from Gum Branch Road and closer to the residential. And without...
At least it might free up a little bit of, you know, traffic right at the intersection.
And without the UDO in front of me, I don't know if there's a... The difficulty here is Rain Tree subdivision itself is not in the city's jurisdiction at all. There's no city zoning or anything there, so the UDO has no applicability to that jurisdiction because it's subject to Onslow County. But it would put a driveway closer to residential.
I do agree with three things that was mentioned. Visibility, the fact that it actually, when it rains, it is terrible. I don't know any of the persons that live out there, but some of you might have remembered Coach Roosevelt Sanders. He coached the Marine Corps Boxing Team. I used to visit him quite a bit. And, you know, the issue with Dollar General already impacting that neighborhood. I wouldn't want a facility to, you know, to cover up the entrance of Belfort Homes. So that's part of it, but definitely under these conditions, because I knew when Coach, he had a sinkhole. So I know there are probably other, you know, you got to find runoff or another way to deal with what's already happened concerning flooding. So, and I don't, you know, maybe you can make me understand that at a later time, but I do not see...
Well, I mean, I would just point, too, that the property is currently zoned corridor commercial, and there is a wide variety of uses permitted by right. And with a self-storage facility requiring a special use permit, this is an opportunity to perhaps put conditions on the property that the applicant would be amenable to. I was going to mention the hours of operation. City council could make that a condition of the special use permit, and anything else that this council felt could discuss it with the applicant or just do your own condition. You also have the ability to table it for and require a neighborhood meeting. That is part of the UDO, and that is within your power.
Let me ask you this, Jeremy.
Yes, sir.
What is the required amount of time that has to be advertised prior to the meeting?
We have to advertise between ten and twenty-five days. No more than twenty-five, no less than ten. And we usually hit the middle point. Property owners that are notified are those directly adjacent. So you would have had five property owners notified by mail. We placed a sign on Gum Branch Road, and there was an ad advertisement ran the past two Saturdays in the Jacksonville Daily News. One of those advertisements has to happen ten days prior to this hearing.
Can I ask a question, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Is that your only advertisement? Because Jacksonville Daily newspaper used to be a publication that was printed seven days a week. Now it's only printed two days a week, Thursday and Saturday. So...
We used to advertise every two Fridays before. Now we've moved it to do Saturdays before. State law just requires the advertisement of two times.
Was, is there a billboard telecommunication near this area that sometimes how we advertise this various? Do we ever utilize those for public?
Not for special use permits. In the fifteen years I've been with the city, we've never used anything other than stipulated by state statute for a rezoning or a special use permit. Now, if it's a wide area rezoning like we did years ago on the Preston Road area, or even further back at the corner of Western and Lejeune, we'll post multiple signs, and we will run a larger ad in the Daily News.
And for the signs that were established in the ground, how far up off the ground? Because I'm just thinking on Gum Branch, people don't necessarily drive and look for signs to read simultaneously.
It's a sign that we've used for years, is a three-foot sign that states at the bottom, special use, has the number to contact, and the city seal, you know, on white background. And then there's blue for the special use. I believe there's some red in there, too.
A question, maybe Anthony, or you can answer this. Regarding about the traffic light, a traffic control device there, is there any way that that could trigger a warrant for that? Or is that out of the question? You swear the evidence you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you God?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. So about a year ago, we engaged with DOT about concerns with this location as well as the Deerfield intersection right down the road. They did a safety analysis, and it ended, let me say that differently. It identified a safety issue that needed to be addressed. The answer is yes. The signal is currently warranted at this location as well as Deerfield, and both will be installed within the next year, year and a half.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Based on what I've heard here tonight, you know, that's a possibility that could resolve a lot of the problem there. Not all of the problem that the neighborhood has with it, but the safety concerns as far as getting in and out of traffic, even without that being there, might be a good thing.
Right.
You know? So perhaps, I know these things cost money, average cost of a traffic signal.
About three hundred K.
Half a million dollars. That's the problem. That's the biggest problem. If you have multiple developers doing site share, I mean, the cost could be shared, or there is a method of sharing that cost, correct, for future? You know what I'm talking about?
Yes, sir.
Okay. There's other developable property around there. I see an undeveloped property there, this RMF high-density there, that somebody's probably going to pick up sooner or later. Dollar General doesn't care because they're already there. They don't have to have a traffic light. I don't think it would be fair to put the whole cost on the company that's here today on this application. And we're talking about a half million dollars. That's a lot of money.
So the good news on this is that the funding has already been allocated by DOT through spot safety, and so I should have been clear on that. It is warranted, and they've identified the funding. They're currently working on design.
There you go. Appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Good piece of information there. Okay.
What about issues concerning flooding coming into that residence?
So while I do not believe, you know, during our Type III site plan review, they don't submit the stormwater permit and erosion control because that's additional cost with a project that could be denied. But the way the unified development ordinance and state stormwater work is any stormwater they create has to be contained. They cannot create a drainage issue that affects the street or adjacent properties. We review the graded and drainage sheet as part of the site plan to make sure that they're not dumping any water or the potential for water to be put onto the street. They have to contain it.
But you said they cannot create an issue?
Right.
But if an issue...
We do not have a requirement to improve the drainage situation, but they cannot make it worse.
But if they're holding on that site there, that keeps it from draining in.
Correct.
So, all right, so thank you very much. Appreciate it. Ma'am, you wanted to speak. Come on up, please. If you would, please. Do you swear the evidence you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you God?
I do.
Please state your name for the clerk, please.
My name is Claudia Hurlbut, H-U-R-L-B-U-T. I'm a resident of 308 Fall Drive in the Rain Tree Development, 28540 Jacksonville. Thank you.
Okay.
We moved to Rain Tree in 2011. We rented a home for a year and then bought a house. The reason that I'm here, everything's pretty much been addressed, as in, you know, what's going to go there. I would like to tell you this. I drive that road every day. I go to physical therapy, I have lots of doctor's appointments. I have yet seen the notice because it is behind lots and lots of bushes on the left-hand side, and you can only see it when you're driving towards Richlands or you're coming from Richlands. I don't go there. I have not seen it. The only reason I know we have this meeting is the Facebook group. That's all. It said if you have something to say, go be at the meeting. Here I am. I have not seen the advertisement or the phone number or whom to contact. There was nothing. I didn't get a letter like we did when the person behind us in where we live, there was somebody who bought the property and built a huge farm, homestead kind of thing. So I've been to a meeting like this before. My concern is the traffic because I do drive this road every day. There is at least three school buses, elementary, middle, and high school. There is trash trucks on Sundays, on Mondays, and Wednesdays, and on Thursdays. Now, my concern, when you look at the map, is when you come into Rain Tree, it's a single road, it goes down the hill. What's going to happen while they're building this? When all of these construction vehicles and all that weight is going to be brought in? When you go home to Richlands today and you're going down Gum Branch, you will be stuck on Henderson and Gum Branch because that's how far traffic backs up already with all the new developments all the way down towards Richlands. So if you're going to put a storage facility there, it's not about the sixteen people that are going to drop off their stuff, which we have three different storage facilities in the neighborhood within a mile from each other. It's the U-Haul on Western and Gum Branch. There is another one at Deerfields. We have one down on Ramsey and Gum Branch. I don't know why we need another one. Maybe it's because that huge new development at the River of Life Church is going up. Maybe that's what it is. But I don't understand why we need another one. Like I said, the public, for us as neighbors, I don't think we've been informed enough. And I would really appreciate if we could have a neighborhood meeting. I don't know how this works. I'm not familiar with these kind of things. But I think there needs to be a hearing from the neighborhood that will tell you. Like I said, my biggest concern is traffic, and the gentleman that spoke about this earlier, there's at least one accident a day on Gum Branch because of the traffic and because of all those little neighborhoods trying to go and take a left turn or a right turn. Terrible accidents all the time. And now we're going to add, and I get that we're going to get a light, but that's another year and a half, and in the meantime, we have all this construction going on. Oops, I'm sorry. I just don't understand how this is going to happen. We're already having issues coming home or leaving our homes, and now we're going to have the construction people coming in? They are going to break the road because those things are heavy. The road is terrible. The other thing was the water runoff. The water runoff in Rain Tree is so bad, we have sinkholes in our neighborhood. Natural Link came in and was digging around in the front yards and broke several of the stormwater drain.
I appreciate it. I'm going to call your time right now because I gave you extra time.
I'm sorry. Yes. Am I done?
I borrowed your time. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you for coming out. All right, question, Jeremy. Construction entrance.
Yes.
Where is that going to be?
Yeah, their proposal on their demolition and plan is that same entrance that they're...
When they're going to close it?
Right, that way. They're compacting, and it's only impacting there.
So it will not impact...
I believe with Rain Tree Road and Gum Branch both being DOT roads, when they do their driveway permitting, they have financial guarantees and stuff for any damages that may happen that the developer is responsible for, so they are covered both ways that when they go and do their final inspections, to make sure that any damages they've done, they've repaired. I mean, in the case, you know, in this world economy, you know, things happen. If they were to stop construction, there's a recourse for DOT to go back and finish up or fix any damages.
My concern would be whether, being a two-lane roadway Rain Tree Road...
Yes, sir.
Is the construction equipment going to be... Are the, is the construction equipment going to be off of that road?
Like in terms of storing, like, or just, I mean, it will, I'm sure they will be using Rain Tree Road to get in and out of that site. Unless, you know, the designers want to say otherwise, but that's what I've seen on the plans.
And right now for the residents, is Rain Tree Road the only entrance in? In other words, is there another secondary? Did I miss that? Is there another way to get out of this subdivision?
I believe it ties into the back of Lordell Acres.
So you're going to have to cut through Lordell.
Further down, the Gum Branch.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Yes, yes, sir.
All right, who else would like to speak to this matter, please? Indicate by raising your hand. CNN One, I'm going to close the public hearing in this matter. All right, Counselor, you're being asked to consider the site plan and the special use permit.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for 423 and Gum Branch Road to approve it. Filing is the A2G's affirmative, and that I think we should move forward with it since it already is approved for a corridor commercial.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I'm torn. You know, they, you know, I hear the neighbors, and I hear not in my neighborhood. But I also know that this will have some impact on their neighborhood. I'm a little concerned that the residents may have missed the notification for a public hearing. I would have thought we would probably put a sign along Rain Tree Road so that the residents would know that their neighbor is wanting to build on his property. I'm torn also. It is legally permitted by right, by statute, by our ordinances. It is his property or the owner's property, and they have a, what they're proposing will actually have less impact on the neighborhood based on the trips per day than just about anything else they would put there. But I'm also aware that it's, they're concerned about the traffic on the road. I think they do have a legitimate safety concern, notwithstanding whether this thing is built or not built. We've already, we've heard evidence that there is a safety issue at that intersection. But I'm not sure that the construction or the use of this property will actually impact the safety per se. I mean, if we're only talking 16 trips, and there, but there will be a little bit of an issue during the construction, certainly a little more increased traffic. My preference would be to table this, let the developer, the owner, get with the neighborhood folks and explain this to them. They may not sway them. They may still come back and still have their concerns, but I'm just not sure that they've actually, the residents have actually had a proper exposure, even though we met the letter of the law. I don't know if we met the spirit necessarily, but certainly the letter was met. I would like to see this tabled and brought back at another chance after they've had the neighborhood meeting. And I'd also like to hear a timeline on the traffic signal, if possible. I know, I know we're dealing with DOT, but, and I'd also would like to know a little bit about how long it would take to construct. It's possible that this might be finished sometime around the time of the traffic signal. I don't know. Probably not, but I'd like to at least know the, kind of the timelines there. But, so that's my five cents worth. It was more than two cents, wasn't it? My five cents worth.
That was about eight cents worth. Thank you very much, Mr. Ward. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I would voice an opinion that while I hear and agree with what Bob is saying in terms of the spirit of the law, and I hear what is the concern about the entrance and the traffic, it is absolutely undeniable that this is the least traffic impactful use possible on this kind of commercial corridor use. And while hearing from more residents would probably make them feel better, it's probably not going to change the constitutional or legal ramifications of the facts and evidence. I don't see it making, honestly, and it sounds terrible to say it won't make a difference, but it's not going to change the facts and evidence, the fact that this meets the zoning compliance and that this is, you know, within allowable use. So the facts won't change. The feelings might a little bit, but the facts won't. My preference would be to just proceed with the facts and evidence, given that that's what the decision must be made on.
I agree with you. The thing about it is, nobody wants, nobody wants to inconvenience the folks that live there already. The thing about it is, you know, we're very restrictive in how we do things here in the city. You know, we're protecting our corridor, all right? I heard the testimony about them being, that area being in ETJ. Well, honestly, I think that you're not, unless residents are planning on buying that land back from the folks that own it, I think that you probably, I would be satisfied with something like that there versus what may come there.
If quiet neighbors and low traffic, it's not the worst.
You put a fast food restaurant, it'd be way worse than this.
Fast food restaurant, a smoke shop, anything could actually go there, and that would create even worse. You know, the thing about it is, is, you know, I sympathize with you. I understand how you want to protect your neighborhood. I really do. And I think that what we can do, what we're doing here, what we propose here, you know, makes it a little easier, you know, to have something put there versus what could be put there. And trust me, the county, even Onslow County planning is probably not as restrictive as we are on how we do go about our business. So I think, I have to agree with you. I think, I don't see that there's really any factual or legal reason that we can deny the request.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to say something. Because based on, in my ward, dealing with the Georgetown community, they're impacted in a similar way. But it's going to be worse because you're dealing with a whole housing development that's going to be putting that, that area. You only have one road in, one road out, and it's narrow. With that being said, one thing that the residents got was they got a chance to be heard. And as I talked to the developer, they were willing to make some accommodations based on speaking with the residents. So I would like, if the developer can consider actually talking to the residents, at least doing that before you move forward, you know, so I would like to table this for another time. Give them the opportunity to communicate with you guys because you're going to be neighbors if that's going to happen. And it's better that neighbors can communicate than not. So I would like for it to be tabled, give that the opportunity, and then they can move forward at that point. I would, you know, I'll consider a vote at that time.
There is a motion on the floor, so I'll call the question. Call the question. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
It's two. Is that, did I see that as four to two? Aye. The motion passes. Thank you. Takes me a minute, Ron. Hold on, I got to get back to the right place. Next, we have a legislative hearing for annexation for this Muscadine subdivision. This is off of the Drummer Kellum Road, and Ron, he will be presenting this item. Mr. Massey.
Mayor and Counsel, on behalf of B&amp;M Developers and Tidewater Associates has submitted a petition for voluntary annexation of five tracts of land totaling approximately 48 acres that are contiguous to the current city limit boundaries. The property is located at the corner of Drummer Kellum and Ramsey Road. The developer proposes to build 109 single-family homes with an average value of $210,000 each, and there are four commercial lots with an estimated average value of $350,000 each. Costs and revenues are provided in a detailed annexation analysis. In the staff report, the financial analysis shows a positive cash flow over a five-year period of approximately Staff recommends the council adopt the annexation ordinance as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Massey. This time, we're supposed to meet and open up the public hearing on this matter. Anyone wish to speak to this matter, please indicate by raising your hand. CNN One, close the public hearing. Counselor, you're being asked to approve the annexation. Anybody?
I'll make a motion to approve the annexation.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Here, none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay. Going on to item number, let me get down here, nine. This is our proposed fiscal year report, and our city manager, Josh Ray, will be presenting this item.
Thank you, Mayor. So what we're presenting on tonight, we want to host the public hearing for our FY '26 budget for the city of Jacksonville. I'm going to go over a couple of these items, Mayor, then hand it back to you so you can have the public hearing. We host the public hearing earlier in our process so that members of our community can provide that input. Public hearing's not just for input tonight, but it's part of advertising the planned budget for next year so that people know they can submit those comments to council and to staff so that we can bring those items back to the council as you consider the FY ' '26 budget for the following year. So the fiscal year goes from July 1st, 2025, to June 30th of 2026. The North Carolina state statute requires that the council adopts a balanced budget by June 30th of 2025. The tax rate that we're proposing for FY '26 is 60 cents per $100 valuation. That's no change over the current year tax rate. We have included a 2.25% increase on the water and wastewater rates. We've also included the third year of solid waste recycling and residential sanitation fees, which are approximately $4 for residential, and there's some other fees that come along with those numbers. On this slide, we are presenting the FY '25 amended budget, which is what we're currently operating on. The reason you have the word amended, throughout the year, city council considers items to amend the operating budget. You'll see the total number of operating budget for the current fiscal year, which is FY '25, is $162,652,551. We've included the major funds inside of that breakdown. So if anyone sees the comparison and has questions about FY '26, you can look back into those numbers. We'll also point out that if someone would like to look at these numbers after tonight and you haven't had a chance, tell our citizens to go onto our city website. You can pull up the entire proposed document, and you can submit those questions back to city staff, and we'll respond accordingly, or we'll send those comments to the city council. So on to the right column, the comparison for the FY '26 proposed budget. You'll see the proposal is approximately $20 million lower than the current year budget. So the proposed is $142,728,023. You'll see the differences. There's a reduction in the general fund, but you'll see an increase in the capital projects. And you see, some of these are just based on the number of projects that we have from the current year to the next year, and then wherever we're going to finish with those projects. So some of these dollars may actually carry over in terms of projects into the next year. But what's being proposed is a lower budget than the currently amended budget. Here's the calendar that was presented to council and approved. We introduced the FY ' '26 budget on April 8th. We posted this on the website. We do have hard copies as well for people that don't like to use the website to review items. You can come into the public library, or you can come to the clerk's office. You can get a copy of this, or you can review these items on site. Feel free to take notes and then present that information back. We're at April 22nd today, so this is the public hearing. We'll have a workshop after this meeting tonight. Then on May 6th, we're also scheduled for a council workshop and review. And then right now, for May 20th, we're scheduled for council to consider the FY '26 budget for next year, well in advance of the state required mandate. Mayor, I can answer any questions now, or I can sit down and let the public hearing go.
Let's see if council has any questions so far. Thank you, Mr. Ray. This time, I will open the public hearing on the budget. Anyone present wishes to speak to this matter. CNN One, close the public hearing. Counselor, you're being asked to not take any action at this time. We will look at trying to adopt this at a meeting on or before June 30th of 2025 as prescribed by the statutes.
Mayor, my final comment, if I may, is to encourage citizens, they can email us using the website. So if they have a question, if they don't want to call, or they don't want to come to City Hall, they can email those questions in. And as I said previously, we will receive those as staff. Pull that information together and present that back to council at the next workshop or at a follow-up workshop, just to make sure that you have those items.
It seemed like we used to post one at the county library.
That's what we post, yes, sir.
Okay.
The library has the document. The city clerk posts that as soon as council's received it. We make sure that they have a full document.
All right, so we were going to go to 9A. In our one city moment.
Thank you, Mayor. We do have four items that I'd like to present this evening. There's a lot of things going on in the city, which is fantastic, but these four have been brought to our attention, and they're phenomenal items for us to celebrate. This first one, city receives the top ISO rating. It's not the top ISO rating that we've had. It's not the top in eastern North Carolina. It's not the top in North Carolina. It is the top ISO rating. And you'll see right here, Chief Tomlin is extremely happy about the ISO rating. It's a rating of one. The ISO rating basically goes through everything that we do as a city, as an emergency responder for fire response. That looks at our water supply. It looks at our ability to maintain the water supply, and then it looks at our ability to respond to fire emergencies. This impacts residential. This impacts commercial. It impacts a lot of our insurance rates. And so currently, we had a rating of two that our department has done a very good job of maintaining. And when I say our department, I'm thinking of our water treatment, our water delivery, and our fire department. This is the partnership that these entities work together from public safety to public services to make sure that we're protected. And those efforts have changed our rating from a two to a one. So I'll tell you, Mayor, this is monumental. I haven't seen this before in a place that I've worked. I don't even know of another city town that has one. So if I didn't see it firsthand, I don't know if I'd believe it. So I'd say congratulations to these guys and to Chief Tomlin's leadership. Mayor, also yesterday, no thanks to this guy, but he did work yesterday. Today, he doesn't work here any longer. Mike Gennaro also looks happy about the ISO rating of one. He's telling, Chief Tomlin's telling him now, we got the one, and thank you for that. Mike Gennaro retired from the city of Jacksonville yesterday. Over 50 years of service in public safety in his career, and over 20 years for the city of Jacksonville. What an awesome honor for us to be there to say thank you to Mike for excellent leadership, for just being a good person, and for dedicating his latter part of his career, second half, to our community. I think he's made a great impact on the city of Jacksonville, on the community of Onslow County, on the state of North Carolina, and personally, I've enjoyed working next to him. I did check today to see if he tried to come into work, but he did not. He's wearing slippers and a T-shirt right now. It's kind of weird, but just get that out of your head. So the good thing is, Mike and Fay are going to continue to live in our community and be parts of all that which we do. So very excited. Hate to miss out on that. Hate to miss out on that. This guy back behind me, Mayor, he is, he's traveling to the high tide. I thought we were close enough to the ocean. I thought he'd be happy, but after fifty years, this is just a picture of Daryl we wanted to show you, but Jeremy got into there. Jeremy Smith has done a really good job for our community over the years, fifteen-and-a-half years, and he's going to take the community development director position in Surf City. So we're, we're proud of Jeremy. We're proud of the work that he's done for us, and we're excited to know that we're going to have a partner down the street that we can rely on, and that he can do the same with us, and it'll open up those lines of communication even more. So it's exciting for us to say thank you to Jeremy for being an awesome team member and for constantly being here for us throughout our growth and development. And I'd hate to miss out on, on this occasion to say thanks to Jeremy. It was so good we made Ryan leave town so we could really appreciate Jeremy for this occasion. Thanks, Mr. Bittner. Thank you, sir. And last, but definitely not least to me, this weekend, yesterday, or Sunday, was Resurrection Sunday, so the city has an event through our recreation team and our parks. They work together to put on Easter egg hunt. For some of us, that's a celebration of, of Jesus Christ. For others, it's a celebration of family, friends, and everything else that you enjoy and a reason to get outside in beautiful parks. So our parks department, our recreation department puts on the Easter egg hunt, and the Easter bunny shows up magically every year. Once again, happy faces, happy community members. I don't know how you go wrong when you're opening up eggs that have candy in them, and then you get to eat later, and you get to hang out with a fuzzy bunny. So great community events and awesome for us to see activities. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. So at this time, we'll do the reports, and I'm going to start with Mr. Warden down there.
No report.
I'll just give a PSA to remind our community that this Saturday at ten a.m. at the Vietnam Memorial at Lejeune Memorial Gardens is the Vietnam Veteran Recognition Day and Ceremony. If you are available to come, please join Saturday at ten a.m. at Lejeune Memorial Gardens.
I would like to remind the public that on this coming Thursday at eleven a.m., that the Onslow County Civic Affairs will be holding the Fabric of the Community Award that is going to be at the Onslow County Community, excuse me, Onslow County Government Building on Burton Road. Also, on this Friday at two p.m., the city of Jacksonville will be hosting, along with the North Carolina Department of Military and Veterans Affairs, the Fourth Annual Military Child of the Year Semi-finalist Recognition Award. This year, we have eleven outstanding citizens in the state of North Carolina, military-connected children, with actually two have been awarded the Military Child of the Year. So that event is open to the public. It will be held here in council chambers on this coming Friday at two p.m. Lastly, I had the opportunity to represent the city along with the North Carolina Military Affairs Commission last Thursday at Fayetteville State University. They hosted their third military appreciation luncheon. Basically, they was able to support the Fort Bragg Garrison and uplift the military spouses as well as the military children. So it was a collaboration between Fayetteville State University and Fort Bragg, and it was a very wonderful occasion to be able to see that partnership, particularly with higher education and a military installation. And currently, Fayetteville State is the largest HBCU in the state of North Carolina that has the highest military enrollment students with over thirty-five percent. And currently, tuition for military students, believe it or not, is five hundred dollars a year. So many wonderful programs this fine institution has in serving the state of North Carolina. So if your child is getting ready to graduate from high school, this might be one of those institutions with, for military-connected children you might want to consider. And also, the residents, Mr. Jackson and I, along with several members of the city of Jacksonville, had an opportunity to interface with members of the Bell Fork, Harget Street, and Country Club Road residents last night with DOT at Bell Fork Elementary School. It was an informative meeting. However, there were some things that could have been shared more in detail. So, Mr. Ray, I am going to ask that possibly before this project really gets off the ground, if there is a possibility, that the city of Jacksonville's staff can have a community engagement with the citizens in terms of more in-depth conversation about the impact of what this particular project is going to mean for the Country Club, Bell Fork, and Harget Street area as Department of Transportation moves forward with this project. And that is my report. Mayor Phillips.
Mayor for Tim Bittner.
No report.
Counsel, Mr. Wilson.
Well, Google informed me that tomorrow is the administrative day, so congratulations to everybody that works in office, Mr. Rosen. All y'all, we could not definitely make all this work out, so congratulations. Thank you.
Mr. Jackson.
Ditto the way he said about that.
Because we know you do the work, Mr. Ray. We don't know about that guy.
Questioning.
I think yes.
Everything's still in question.
But anyway, first of all, I'd like to mention that this was reentry month, or second-chance month. And actually, we had a reentry program here, so everything was started by Ms. Carol Smith-Davis, who was a former law enforcement officer as well. And we would like to continue that work that she put in before we even thought about doing it prior. But Dr. Lily Gray and Chief Yanero has been instrumental in the beginning of that process, and we've had some bumps in the road, but I think we're on the right direction now. So also, there's a community development week, and today, we stood outside a new home. And we also got a chance to speak to a young lady that had gotten into her house, I think, back in December. So, you know, we're doing all that we can to mitigate the, the issues with homelessness in the area because we're providing affordable homes for those that qualify, and we, we continue to want to, you know, tell those that aren't in homes now that there is a process. And a lot of people don't understand that they may be able to be in a home, you know, because of, just not the knowledge of it, that they call our Neighborhood Improvement Department, and they could possibly go through the program that they have in, in place to move forward in home ownership. We do have taxes that go up, but the rental prices are going up a whole lot faster than mortgage prices are. So we want people to get into homes and to actually have support in the process. I also want to mention that a Muffer Point Marine Staff Sergeant retired, Primus L. Kinlaw, turned one-hundred years old yesterday. So he's a veteran of Korean War and World War II, and he's still walking around, talking, and ready to tell somebody to drop and give me twenty anytime. And also, as Dr. Washington spoke, we, we did interface with these communities. I think what has to happen in any future meetings that DOT, they didn't have a real good process in place, first of all. And one thing I told them, I said, "We have a historic issue here." You know, as I mentioned before, this was called the wrong side of the tracks at one time. Bell Fork Homes was created because they wanted to find a place for black staff NCOs. You know, that's a reality. It's necessary to create the best environment so people can have their say and get a better understanding of the total impact of what imminent domain. And as I talked with Anthony, we, we can go back and forth and to find out the best way that we can do things moving forward.
I talked to James Mays, and he expects to break ground in June on housing over there on Western. If you want to mention it.
And that's in my report.
I forget the name of the gentleman.
That guy has something else to say. He could try to make you say.
Mayor for Tim, he wanted to make sure that we knew that James Mays was about to break ground on that project over there in the Commons to, to bring us some more housing and all. I guess we needed to mention that. That's, that's, we need it badly. Did you have anything else to add?
No, sir.
How about our city attorney?
Nothing to report. Thank you.
Nothing to report. All right. Now we, uh...
Oh, may I, should we bring up YMCA?
About to.
The YMCA ground opening was?
Yeah, that's right.
Oh, yeah. I forgot to mention, yes. The YMCA, we had the opportunity to attend and break ground with, with the folks at the YMCA, with their aquatic center, and this is, uh, this is going to be a real crown jewel for our area here. It's a collaboration between the school system, the Onslow County Board of Commissioners, city of Jacksonville, and the state of North Carolina to, that is funding this venture. The groundbreaking was, was it last week?
Two weeks, thirteen weeks ago.
Yeah. It was well-attended, and we just can't wait to see it start being constructed and getting folks in the pool. The agreement that was written, there was an agreement, we didn't just give three million dollars to the YMCA just, just for them to build a pool, but we built one that's going, and Onslow County and the school system, we all expect something out of it. In, in the agreement, it's written that our citizens are going to have opportune times to be able to go in that, use that pool. All the second graders in Onslow County are going to get swim lessons at that pool. We're going to teach them all how to swim. Great idea, huh? We have a, one of the leading causes of death in children is drowning, so maybe we can curb that a little bit. But we're very excited about that. This, it's been a long, long journey, but it's finally all going to come to fruition. And we also went to the drying in of the Marine Corps Museum over there, and it's, it's starting to take shape over there, looking good. I don't, I think they said their proposed opening date was next spring or summer, was it?
Spring.
And looking forward to seeing that. It's just another added feature of the Lejeune Memorial Gardens, and it's going to be, it's really looking good. If you haven't been over there, just take a look. Go over there, visit the memorials. You have the Beirut Memorial, the nine-eleven memorial, you have the Vietnam, Vietnam Memorial, you have the...
Corman.
Corman's Memorial. Also, the Muffer Point Marine Memorial, and also the...
Nine-eleven.
Nine-eleven. I said nine-eleven. Oh, I know what I forgot, left out. There's actually bathrooms that are almost completed over there. Hallelujah, right? Okay. So, yeah, they're almost at the completed stage, but anyway, it's, it's a great place to visit. If you bring, if you have folks come visit here, tell, take them over there. Let them, let them look. Those things are, those things have a lot of meaning over there.
Mayor, and I would like to thank the staff that joined us on yesterday, I think.
Oh, okay, yeah, you had some folks.
That's right. Tracy was there, Tracy Jackson. We had Anthony, we had Mr. Massey, and Mr. Blackman, Terrell was there, our assist, other assistant.
Very good. Okay, so now, let's, we're going to move our party over to A and B, and we're going to discuss the budget. So if you'll grab your budget, budget books, and we'll take a slight recess if you need to go to the restroom or whatever, and we'll meet in A and B.
We're in session, Mr. Wilson. Is that what you played in high school?
Yes, sir.
I didn't even, I didn't even qualify for that.
You couldn't.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, guys, for coming into here. We pulled into, to the workshop so that we can go over a couple items, present some more, review for the council, and then we like to have the level of dialogue here. So I've got a couple slides that I want to go over some information, and I want to go back over some of the pages in the book. This will be the quick version, and then we'll receive any type of questions. We did invite some friends and family in the meeting around you here, just in case there's some questions we want to talk about in terms of operations for next year. So as I said, in the public hearing, we are on schedule. Tax rate, we're proposing no change. We have the increases that council has reviewed throughout the year. These are items that we continue to present to council so that you don't have to make these decisions preparing at the last minute, but they're already embedded into the budget process. So the sewer rate, the sanitation rate, the tax rate, these are items that we have moving forward. We just showed you this comparison because I want to lead it into the next slide, but the one-sixty-two million versus the one-forty-two million, that's the FY twenty-five to the FY twenty-six. This right here shows you the breakdown of that one-hundred-and-forty-two million. Shows you that one-hundred-and-twenty million dollars are in operation. So that's our day-to-day. Those are the functions that we're doing every year, and I would say those are very consistent numbers year over year at this point. So when we're talking about a baseline budget, the one-twenty million is, is really the baseline. So if you're thinking about next year's budget, it has to be there, and then it goes up from there at this point. So when you're, when you're categorizing or talking to another community and they say, you know, "What's your total budget for FY twenty-six?" It's the one-hundred-and-forty-two million at this point. Then we have the capital projects, and I think that's, that the council set us up for a, a really great opportunity using the four-cent tax rate to go towards capital improvement projects. The action the council took years ago to do this is phenomenal, and it gives us the opportunity to carry these projects year over year. We do have other big projects that we're hopefully going to embark upon next year, but that doesn't mean that just because the big projects are there that we don't have all of these other projects. If you recall, when we talked about the number of federal grants, we had over sixty federal grants that are active. And so some of those are part of our capital projects. You'll remember the NOAA projects on stormwater that we have, that, that Wally and Pat worked together, and we have sixteen million dollars in those projects. Then the next line are transfers. So those, even though you're looking at one-hundred-and-twenty million on the top line, thirty-seven on the next line, and then fourteen, and you're wondering how that equals one-forty-two, those transfers are the interdepartmental transfers. That would be behind you, Mayor. We call Terrence a transfer, and then we have Lisa, who's up here somewhere. We call her a transfer. And then some of Chalante, you know, she's a transfer as well, but, so anyway, those numbers aren't going to balance out to one-forty-two. So if someone's looking at this screen, they give you a call and say, "Your math is off." Those are inter-fund transfers. But that's that breakdown. And here's the other part. Of that one-hundred-and-forty-two million dollars, this year, we're up to sixty million dollars. The mayor asked us the question two years ago, and again last year, how do we continue to maintain that? We maintain that, the growth in salaries and benefits, based on any of that growth that we have, because we're only getting ad valorem tax from about half of our property in the city. So it makes us completely different than about every other community in the United States. So we're looking at sixty million dollars in salaries and benefits. That does include that five percent market and merit that we've discussed and we've included inside of here. That sixty million is roughly forty-three percent of the total budget for next year. So again, when you're thinking about the metrics of how we're moving up and down year to year, we're forty-three percent of total operating budget that goes to salary and benefits. We do have these five new positions that we've put into the budget for next year. We have a building inspector trainee program. If you recall, that's one of the white papers where we talk about the ability to bring someone in as an apprentice level so that they can train, and hopefully, they can become certified in all of our trades. Then we have a planning position that we bring in. We have a lot of, of projects coming into the community where we need that increased planning. We have streets. We have two maintenance workers funded through water and sewer because this goes back to bringing a service in-house for street cuts, and we, we feel that we can do this more effectively and more efficiently. So you see a, a cost trade-off from professional services to staffing, but we still need the approval for the two new positions to put in for FTEs. And then utilities, maintenance, this is a location tech, so that person comes out to locate all of these lines. You know, we constantly go through, call before you dig, and we, we look at the number of projects that we have going on. If we are not able to locate what's in the ground, that slows up our developers. And developer could mean one house, one business, or it could mean forty-eight, four-hundred, four-thousand houses. So this is important for us. These are the new positions. If you recall, last year, we had two new positions that we added. If you recall, last year, we had two new positions that we added to our base, uh, and so this will move us up in our total employee count. It may not necessarily mean an impact, a greater impact on the salary side because of the cost trade-off, but the new positions. And then the last thing that I say here, and I, you made the comment before we came over here, Mayor, we're right on schedule where we want to be. Uh, the, the ability of council to consider items throughout the year really helps us navigate the budget process. It makes the budget less cumbersome at one period of the year. You're doing a lot of heavy lifting throughout the year, and I, from a staff perspective, we really appreciate that, uh, level of input from, from the council. Any questions on those? Those are just numbers, but they are the base of the operating budget for next year.
I have a question, Mr. Ray, right quick. With the five positions, was that factoring in, um, Mr. Smith's position or not?
So this is not a new position for Mr. Smith? His is still there, so this is an extra position?
Okay, so his will not be eliminated through attrition?
No, ma'am.
Will we, uh, will there be a, a run, another run of the water and sewer rate model prior to budget approval, or?
As of right now, we weren't planning on having another run, but with Wally and Sabrina, they have that ability to review that, and we can definitely do, uh, do another run.
Maybe just an update on, on how, how we, how we're continuing to do is, is, you know, is the two and a quarter enough? Is it too much? Just right? Probably, it's probably just right, but, uh, just be little information.
If, if you're good with that, we'll run that for, we'll do it for the next workshop meeting, and we'll lead with that, Mayor, as a good, uh, start for that workshop discussion, and, because the water and sewer, the fund balance and the rate model are very important for a lot of our projects moving forward for next year, so I think that's a good add-on for us. Mayor, I want to run through, uh, the, a couple of the white papers just to make sure we're good with council on these items, so that, uh, this would be page 27 is the first white paper in your budget, because if there's questions here, then we would need to pull any of these items out of the budget before we come back to the next workshop. The first page on 27 is the employee compensation plan and the personnel items that I mentioned. If you go to the bottom of page 27 in your book, it lists out those items, it lists out those employees, and it talks about what we're doing to maintain the pay plan moving forward. That continues to be a concern for recruitment and retention for us. Uh, we've had a conversation, uh, multiple, uh, times about how do we retain quality employees and how are we going to keep them? This is, it's our strategy. You adopted this strategy three and a half, four years ago. We want to keep this as a top priority. Council made it a top priority again this year, so we've started the budget with these numbers. So when we show you that 60 million, that's after the 5% increase and these changes into the market analysis as we try to move forward. And we're doing that market, utilizing the North Carolina League of Municipality Survey Population Communities, 25,099, and we're looking at CPI and a couple other factors. So that's how we're trying to look at both our market and then the merit to try and stay ahead of the curve so we don't fall behind. I can't say that this year's actions will be, uh, will solve it all, but it's always a positive step in the right direction. Yes, ma'am.
Are we on par, behind a little? I know we're not ahead of the curve.
Yeah, we're not ahead of the curve.
Lovely phrase, but I know we're not ahead of the curve.
Yeah, no, ma'am. So we are, uh, we're right at our, at our midpoint, and with the next survey, the fear is, based on other people doing, um, more increases, then we fall between midpoint and low portion of there. So we have that, that analysis that shows. The challenge is maintaining that revenue stream that'll supply what we have. Uh, the good part that I would tell you is, we mentioned this before, one of our strategies is making sure we hire people at the right salary when they come in. So we look at the experiences, we look at their, their skill level, their education. Everybody doesn't just come in now at an entry-level position, they may come in at a higher level within their, within their grade. And I think that's a big part of us moving forward, because it's not just about entry-level positions, it's about maintaining for people that are five years, 10 years, 15, 20, and so on.
What, what I like, what you've done since you've come on board, is allowed HR to report to us and, and share their experiences, both, uh, anecdotally, as well as, uh, through, through analysis of, you know, how, how, what we're doing from the pay positions is impacting our, our employment capabilities. And we're only as good as the people that we, and, and I have to tell you, the, um, I got dragged kicking and screaming into the, using the League of Municipalities. I fought it for years, but, uh, I think, I think, uh, looking back, I was wrong, and that was probably one of the best decisions this council's done, uh, to make sure that we continue to maintain a high standard of employees.
And I would agree, Mr. Warden, that the concept there, defining that market, when Kimberly and her team presented the concept of having to define market, it gives us the parameters, it gives us a focal point that we can use as a metric, and then the quarterly reports give us the metrics. And, and I encourage you to continuously read those so you see what is our turnover, where are the areas where we have some concerns, and where are we seeing some strengths? Uh, we talked earlier that, uh, there's consistent concerns in public safety, whether that's police, fire, or dispatch, there's concerns. And there've been concerns for, what year did you start police, Mayor?
'74.
However long ago that was. They're there.
The problem with the league for police is that, that's not who we compete with as a general rule. We're competing with the federal government, and that's very difficult.
And even Onslow County.
The county as well. There's some disparity there.
That's right. It's a challenge, and so we have to, we have to manage that, and that's what, uh, that's what Ms. Edwards was talking about earlier, and it's what Mr. Warden had mentioned previously. So, so that's what we've got included. If, if council's good, we're at there, that, that's where we're moving forward. If you have any questions on that, I just encourage between now and the next meeting, follow up, and, and let's review those, so if you've got questions, we can drill down. As part of that, on page 29, you see the organizational chart. This shows you where we're at now. It clarifies how the roles and responsibilities within the city manager's office operates, and it gives you that division. Um, hopefully, what you're going to see is you're going to see strengthening of the support that we have for our departments so that we can move items around and provide ample opportunity. Um, as I've said previously, inside of our budget resolution, we'll have a section where you approve our org chart for the year so that you know how we're utilizing the FTEs within the budget.
I like this. I had an initial, so I know who's who.
We put them behind you.
Now, now I know who to call. Who are you going to call?
Mayor, on to, on to number 30, on to page 30, that's the health insurance update. The reason this is here is because we forecast that there, we will need to consider some items next year. And when I say next year, I think in the next four to five months, we'll have a workshop with council where we start talking about some of these items, because we've presented you with the fund balance, we've presented you with the expenses, and just back to Mr. Warden's point about seeing how the, the numbers compare, you're seeing the market increase proposed at about 7.5% nationally, provided by our team, uh, and what we've included within the budget is 7%. So we're looking at the market factors, but then we're looking back towards what we're seeing internally. And we, uh, we go over this, uh, monthly with the consultant, and then we have quarterly sessions as well to try and stay ahead. Uh, I think this is a concept that you see when you're talking to other municipalities is, they see the increases, they're battling that, so, uh, this is your focal point, but the good thing for us is this year, um, the increases aren't there for, we're not raising the employee contributions this year, um, for active employees in the plan. But we, I leave it here so you know we're going to address this in the next few months. So no action on that one. The fee schedules, page 31, Mayor, I can go back to that, there, there are the standard items that we've included, water, wastewater rates, uh, that's what we've already included, revenue streams. The only way this will change is, uh, Mr. Warden's comment back of looking at the revenue models. You know, we want to have all of our funds looking at revenue models, so, uh, if we, if we have any type of findings throughout the next, um, mo, running the model, then we'll bring that back, and council will consider those items there. That full fee schedule's in the back of your book, so please take the time to look at that. If you have questions, let us know, we'll address those, any of those questions we'll bring back.
The only, uh, the only negative I've heard about some of our, our past fees is that $4. You know, that's, you know, of course, they always say it's their water bill, but, uh, that $4 sanitation fee, this is now the third year in a row, and, uh, I'm sure we're going to hear a little bit more on that one.
It's the third and final of the $12, $12 gap we had a couple years back.
Well, let's, let's hope it's the final.
And that goes back to the concept about the water sewer revenue models. We have to see where we're going to end up with at the end of the year. And so it's hard to look now at those numbers, we have to wait till the audit report to show what the full impact of year two will be. We don't just, that's why we don't just look back at our, at our daily ledger, we look back at the full audit and go with those numbers. So that'll be this, uh, this coming up.
And then do we compare our sanitation to what it would cost if you were out in the county?
Do, yeah.
More services or almost a little bit less, right?
I, I think it goes back to Mr. Ward's comment. If, if we could share that more with the community, if you recall, I think twice now, Tony's presented that information to us, and we look at the comparison on those bills, and, and for some providers, we're half of that with more services. I think people need to see it, but I, I still don't think that changes a narrative for somebody.
Or I agree.
It just says, well, good for those people, but I live in the city, and so...
And for years, my property tax covered it, you know, or, or, it didn't cover it, but it did. Now we're trying to get this to be where it's on, it funds itself very much, you know?
Same as the other enterprise fund. So I think that's the narrative we have to continue to push, and especially if someone asks that question, we have that opportunity to share that with them and educate all of us as citizens about the benefit.
And, and when, when my response to, to them, when they say, well, it used to be covered under my property tax, I said, no, it really wasn't. I said, property tax never covers just the police and the fire department alone. It's, it, the, those two budgets, those two part, the budgets exceed our property tax revenue, so it's never really covered that.
What is, what is our, what are we subsidizing sanitation with this year?
Well, at the, at the last budget, we came out to, uh, about $600,000, so now we would still have about $400,000 subsidy, four to $600,000, Mayor, just on a ballpark, but that's that subsidy. So the, the benefit to that is, we're returning that back to the general fund if we're not subsidized, because we only subsidize out of the general fund for these items, so we're, we're returning those funds back into the general fund where the majority of, of those employees are coming out of, so...
And we're not trying to do it as a revenue stream, we're just trying to basically break you.
It's not a revenue yet. It's not that point where we're trying to... Our goal now, our first goal would be close the gap, make a dollar over expenditures.
Right.
Now, when you have to pull money out of your savings account as a big paper?
Well, year over year, but it's that, it's that change that we're talking about that we have to articulate and educate our citizens. You still only have so many dollars, how are you going to spend them? This is how we're trying to maximize it. On to page 32, Mayor, that's, uh, Jacksonville, Onslow Economic Development. As I said, the kicker here is, we want to bring this item back. So this is to prep the council at this point to show you the numbers that we've included in the current year, and to say, once the strategic, the strategic plan's back, which will be, uh, maybe September, somewhere in that timeframe? Anthony's our rep with Joe Ed. So when we get to that strategic plan, after that, the goal is to bring this discussion item back to council in a workshop so we can talk about the strategy moving forward. I think there's going to be some areas that Joe Ed needs to fill the gap, and that may be in funding. You know, one thing that I saw today in an email was that, that Duke Energy, over the last two years, has given, maybe it's $170,000 plus or minus into Joe Ed, that's where we'd want to see. That's that private funding that actually gets Joe Ed moving forward. And so if we can get all the municipalities in, and then we start bringing in these partners, that's an effective strategy for us to hopefully accomplish bigger and better things. Because every time, every time an Amazon opens or a Biscuitville opens, Duke Energy is going to receive a new client, and that's, that's where we see it.
Yeah, but part of the, part of the problem there, though, is that Duke Energy and those guys, they're, they're not interested in funding operations. And where they, where Joe Ed has had a shortfall has been in operations, not enough personnel to handle. They've got plenty of, there's generally plenty of grant money available for development of, of land, but not, not the operations side, so...
And I think that's where the strategic plan's going to show us that, if, if they have private funding that can go over here to the project side, then the local dollars, the municipal government dollars can go into the operations or the staffing side to really hit those areas. If we're going to, if we're going to grow and we're actively going to look for sites and develop, um, buildings and businesses, we're going to have to have the people in place to do the work. It's a lot of work, it's a long play for every business. That's why I go back to the point, Amazon's a huge success, Biscuitville is another success, Slim Chickens, another success, Wawa, these are all things that add to our base, and we need those, because that's the only growth we've seen over 10 years. If you don't have it, we don't have any ad valorem growth at all in the last decade. We hope to see that now, some of that was referenced tonight with the residential, but that's, I think we're right on the same point. And so what we're saying is, just know this is the same item, it's going to come up in a workshop, you're going to go ahead and start on FY '27 as soon as you consider FY ' '26. The opioid funding, uh, we, we don't really have a wholesome request there, but that update is to say, we want to change that strategy, and we want to start using those funds, uh, more completely to have an impact in the community, and we see that in the police and fire operations. We want to bring those revenue streams in. I think now, on some of ours, maybe the Walgreens, we're on year three, and so that means for Walgreens, there's another seven years left. Uh, one of those settlements, we get $23,000 a year, one of those settlements, we get $6,000 a year, one we get $14,000. Our total number right now, I believe, was 100 and, um, it's somewhere on the page, but 167 plus or minus. So we get 167,000 a year. So if we're only allocating 30, 40, 50,000 to our partners to help us with some of our programs, then we still have 120,000 plus or minus that we can allocate in to our existing programs, still to combat those issues. Part of what Mr. Jackson was saying earlier about reentry, it, we're using those funds for United Way and for Onslow Community Outreach and some other partners. We may need to look at those partners or use those funds internally instead of just letting them sit there in a, in a fund balance.
Yeah, I think we need to have further discussions on that, because you might find that there's more adequate ways and more beneficial ways through some of the other organizations, like mentoring and stuff of that nature.
Part of our, with our annual action plan and bringing the funnel in, is to allow us to focus those efforts. When the opioid funds started coming in, we didn't discuss that as a council, we didn't discuss how do we want to utilize those funds. You did make the decision to fund some of those programs, which is excellent, but we didn't have a, a strategy for what was the 10-year plan, and so I think that goes back to the point, what is the strategy going to be? We've operated without a strategy on these, these funds, now we want to bring that in. So we're going to have a comprehensive discussion, uh, with council about trying to fill those holes, but we want you to do it, as you flip over to page 34 and 35, we want you to do it through the action plan that we review annually, because we want those partners to come through the same door, so they know we have these limited funds, you have to serve these communities, this is where you'll get those funds. And it'll be reviewed, uh, we may need to look at that process, but we've done a really good job over the last year and a half bringing people through the front door. And I think that's a, that's a huge improvement on our systems, uh, to get people to come in. You made, uh, Mr. Bender made the comment that we see James Mays will be breaking ground soon. That's another partner. We have a request from, uh, from Keith Walker on another project, and we have, that project's been streamlined, that process has been streamlined, so they come in and say, we're looking at land or money, and this is what we're going to give you. We bring that back to council and say, if Keith and James both go after the same project, we put the money out for both of them, and whoever gets awarded, they get the, whoever gets the, the win. So we give the support to all those entities. It could be anybody else, but I say Keith and James because they're doing the majority of the projects in Jacksonville. So with the annual action plan and the community outreach dollars, there's not an action requested on that item either, Mayor. It just shows you, these are the numbers that we've included, uh, gives you a comparison It gives you a comparison between FY '25 and FY '26. So a couple more items. Page 36 is the capital improvement plan. You have an entire book for the capital improvement program, and we ask that you look at that. The, the total projects are included on the page. We ask that council will consider those items within the FY '26 proposed budget. Obviously, those move year to year based on priority and need. Some of these carry over because they're multi-year projects, just like our main sewer transmission line, that sewer collection line. So when we complete these projects, we celebrate, and then we go back and start on the next project. So CIP constantly moving. We're encouraging directors to feed programs into the CIP. If you remember this year, we completed the Parks and Rec Master Plan. Those items continuously feeding into the system so we get them into the hopper and we know when we're going to be on replacement schedule. Any questions on the big picture of the CIP? Okay, and if we get to that, Mayor, you can, if someone sends us that and you want to hit some specific projects, let us know, and we'll bring those specific projects to the next workshop right after.
I know we're, we're advertising for the Cape Sealing Experiment. When, will you have a, a report back to us sometime?
I can do you a report. The first round came in over budget, so we had to cut some of our planned streets out, and we've repaid it.
So you haven't done streets?
We have not done that yet. The first bit was over budget.
That's an integral part. You know, we present that to council. We want to try it out. I love the title that you just made up there is the, the Cape Fear, Cape Seal, Cape Fear Experiment's a Bad Movie. But we want to get it because that can be an integral part for Wally's team moving forward for the streets. So as soon as we get you some numbers, hopefully those will come in and we'll get something relatively close. If they still come in high, we'll just have to cut the projects again and get something going so we can try it out. We'll get a report on that one as well, Mayor. Same thing over on the equipment replacement plan. We bring this as a placeholder to let you know consistently every year, we have an equipment replacement plan, and we try and encourage directors that if you don't get your items inside of that ERP, then they're not going to appear in the proposed budget. So if you've got something that you, you pulled off the wall somewhere and you want to get it in, it has to come into the ERP because we need to be able to plan year over year. You can see those totals that are included, 1.2 in the general fund, 1.4 in the water and wastewater fund, and 1.5 in sanitation. Think about those. As we've said, that's one truck in sanitation. That's where we're at. You know, these are, these are big, big equipment items, and they're big repair items. So those are some of the items. They're all just included in the budget, Mayor. They're not out there separately. Economic Impun, Economic Impact Fund, the one request we're asking for council is to allow us to allocate the $34,765 into the housing development side of the Economic Impact Fund so that it remains to have $1 million. And I say that just to follow up as the previous comment, when the project requests come in, we want to have the funds allocated to be able to present that to council and say, you have the funds here if you want to do those projects. And we take that $34,000 out of the general fund. At some point, we could remove, we could use some of the economic development side over on the other, but we'd like to keep those separate so that we still have those two functions moving forward equally at the same time. And the last page, Mayor, page 39, is the resiliency. I think you get a lot of people that ask questions about what if, what if, what if, and what if something happens? We will respond. We'll utilize the fund balance that its council has done an excellent job of securing, and we will take those funds, put them into action, and then we'll follow through with, if it's a disaster, follow through with the FEMA process or any other reimbursement process, so.
Have we ever thought about designating some of our unassigned, moving some over each year into a, for lack of a better term, an emergency fund? I know we have a capital reserve, which, which we hope to use on some, some building projects, but I'm just, just wondering if we, if we've ever thought about designating some of those monies.
About three years ago, you, we had that conversation where we say, do you designate it, or do you say council has all of that? If we decide that the, that the optics are there and we need to move the funds over, if you recall this year, you moved funds over into the, the capital for, a big ticket item they have coming up. I, I think the mayor gave us a number with Wally of eight to nine million is what the next cleanup effort could be. Maybe that's a place where we start moving those funds.
I like the idea of having, I, I think if you have a large unassigned fund balance, I think it, it's not explainable very easily to, to folks, and especially those who are looking for extra funds from the city for, for their pet projects. I'd, I'd like to see us set aside an emergency fund from using some of those so that it, it decreases that apparent extra money that we're sitting on. And, and of course, if we're sitting on extra money, people are going to ask, why? Why, why haven't you returned some of it? Why is my taxes so high? So, you know, I, I just, I think we, I think from an optics, you mentioned optics, I think, and a smell test, I think it smells better to me to have a reserve, emergency reserve fund.
If you recall, Mayor, we did, we created the Economic Impact Fund mid-year. We didn't do that at the budget approval. We brought this back as a couple discussions. We requested it. We had the two needs clearly defined. We can do this one the same way. If that's a direction that council takes us and says, hey, let's make this happen, we could allocate some funds by creating a new emergency response fund or something similar. Theoretically, it would be an unrestricted, but it would have that caveat of a restriction created by council.
So do we have a project fund set up for the Williamsburg property still? Or have we ever done that?
Specifically, we've not moved those funds over into, but we have a project. We definitely have a project fund because we're using, we're paying funds for McAdams and for their team.
That would be bad, you could earmark that too for that, just so people know where that money is going. That's going to be a huge ask when that comes up.
That's going to be, that's big money there.
And Mayor, with that, those capital improvement dollars that we talked about earlier, those can move over into that project, but we have to create a full project plan. So we need to know where those dollars are going to go, and we don't typically park the funds in there until we have that action. So as we get closer to the 100% plans and we start to go through that process, we're going to park them over there.
We're supposed to get this back in the fall, right?
We're looking towards October, November, November, pretty much realistically, to have our 100% plans. If you recall from the management report, we do have the managing firm onboard now. So we have them actively at the table helping us navigate through the final 50% engineer design. So we're real excited about having them onboard.
How are you doing on the PUD? Is that in the works?
We're moving, moving forward equally.
We're, we're going to have a very exciting update at the next workshop. So all of those details will be there.
You know, if we have an emergency reserve fund, I think it's also a reminder to council that, that those monies are not available for, for a wish list. It's, it's there for, for a rainy day, a rainy day fund, if you, whatever you want to call it. And it needs to be somewhere in the nine to 10 million dollar range, minimum. Where, even though technically it's unassigned, but it really needs to be a hands-off, hey, this, this is our rainy day fund.
Yeah, it's easily manageable for us to create that if council gives a direction and makes it happen, Mayor. We'll do it just like the other fund. We'll define the use, set it up, create the funds, allocate funds over to that, to that fund, and move forward with that allocated.
Can we talk against names of what's the difference between that and an unassigned balance, fund balance?
My thought is it's still unassigned. It's just the restriction that council puts on it to say, for you guys.
Hands off. Hands off until you have to put hands on.
Until you want to grab it.
Well, that's a good idea, though.
We got to figure out what emergency is. Or, maybe there could be anything.
Well, could be, and there's a discretion that we would have, but it is available there. It's, you know, it's designated for an emergency, whatever, whatever we decide it is.
Well, we have our assistant finance director here. What do you think?
I think it'll be a great idea. Obviously, with emergencies, we do still reach out to try and get reimbursements from FEMA, but that is a very lengthy process.
How long did it take in Florence? Like three years?
We still have a recovery.
We are still recovering funds, closing out the last few projects now. We do have one that we submitted a scope change for. They said those can take up to a year to be approved. So I have been working with our rep, and we have about two more projects to close out from Florence.
And how much is that totaling?
I don't, most of them are the small projects, which we've already been paid for. So it's just a matter of actually closing out the project.
Yeah, I feel like we're under $100,000, plus or minus, just based on some random numbers that we've talked about recently, but.
And the total was like $6 million or something?
Well, you know, from, from Wally's numbers, I thought we were up to $8 million looking at, but I don't remember specifically.
2018.
Right.
That's right.
They put that in 2025.
It was $6 million.
Moving forward. $6 million.
That was just for debris removal.
Right. Yeah, that's right.
It was a damn good property town.
That was, that was the bulk of it, that was debris removal. The $6 million was debris removal.
Times two, that's probably a more accurate number, wouldn't you think?
The good thing is we have a contract that's been locked in. I have to look at where that extended, when that was put in place, but we're probably two or three years into a five-year contract.
Is that critical?
Which was, which was, has, is critical. And the, it was not significantly higher than, than the 2018 numbers that we had with them. So at least it's not at today's rates.
Right, that's true.
We'll prep some concepts for the next workshop, Mayor, and so we want to have that further discussion. We'll prep them and have them ready for that item as well. Other items on this round you'd like us, or items that you want us to bring up for the next workshop?
Yeah, I'd also like to mention, and here the council, council members, that, you know, it would worth you to every once in a while drop in, at least once a week, and talk with the management staff. You become a lot more informed when you do that, you know, as to what's going on in the day-to-day operations, which will help you with the overall scope of things.
It's a whole lot harder now that I'm retired, I'm busier.
I know.
Then I was, when I was.
They got that road closed, you can't get to them.
Well, we'll tell you, Mayor, too, that when you come through, hopefully you'll have the access to somebody that can walk through any of these concepts. I think we have a very strong team, and as I said, they're sitting behind you now, and we're confident we can get these answers, the fill-in. You know, we have Shalante here tonight, we have Jennifer here tonight filling in. This, this is great. We have excellent staff that follows up at all levels, so when you have those questions, I'm very confident we can make it happen. Okay, we've got plan for the next workshop, Mayor, so if you're good on that one, then the only thing left we have is the executive.
Okay. So now I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session to discuss.